Town Council Regenerating Meeting October 19th, 2020. The record show all members present, Attorney President. The motion approved the minutes for October 5th Executive Session. And the October, or I'm sorry, October 15th Executive Session in the October 5th Minutes.
I make the motion we accept the minutes for October 15th. Regenerating Meeting and Executive Session October 15th.
Second.
We move to second that we accept the minutes for October 5th in the Executive Session on October 15th. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Let's go directly to the food pantry because we forgot them at the last meeting. I apologize for that. I know you were waiting the whole time and so it's all yours. Go ahead.
Thanks for inviting us. My name is Caroline Rennett. I work with Purdue Extension here in the county. Debbie just said you were looking kind of for the rundown of what the pantry was. It's a little unconventional, but I'd say about last fall, Purdue Extension started doing some classes inside of Kingsford Heights and through that we realized that you didn't have a pantry any longer. Some people thought there were, some, there wasn't though. So in January, I started looking for different options that we could use and I was working with citizens concerned with the homeless. And we finally found Laura Undom at the Justice Properties. Are you guys familiar, by the way, to start a pilot program with her? Where we're bringing in about 13 to 15 banana boxes of fresh fruit. I'm going to take this off because I'm far enough away. Sorry. There we go. Now I can actually feel like I'm talking. We were bringing in about 15 banana boxes each week to those residents. There's about anywhere from 24 to 28 homes over there. It went really well. The only issue with it was that we started having such a surplus of food, we needed somebody to step in and take that over. So Debbie was nice enough to do that. I'd met her through some of the classes and then through the garden that we're doing. Were we able to up it? Let me just give you the rundown of it. So where are we at? Three times a week now?
Yeah, and we get about 65 families.
So about three times a week and 65 families. And that changes, I have to get that info through them. On average, we're doing about 25 banana boxes a week of fresh vegetables, 50 dairy boxes a week. If you've seen those, those usually have milk in them, some meat in them, usually fruit, onions, potatoes. Each week they're a little different, but it's a really nice offering. And those are paid for by the USDA and we're on our third round of those, I believe. Mozzarella cheese, we've put in about 65 boxes a week into Kingsford Heights. It's around a couple thousand dollars worth of cheese each week. It's quite a bit. And then there's extras, like we'll drop off meat, sometimes like 150 pounds of pork has gone into the community. They've dropped off five or six banana boxes of different frozen meat from Myers and Walmart and different areas like that. It changes each week. It's hard to keep track of, so I can't tell you exactly what's coming into the community because it's basically when they pick it up from the store, that's when it decides what's coming. But it's been very successful. Like I said, it's unconventional because a lot of times you're planning something like this and you're working with the Salvation Army to drop it off there and then they're distributing it. But since you didn't have something like that, we went with basically out of the truck, which works, which they're doing that in a few places in Michigan City and La Porte, where they'll have so much food in that they'll put out flyers on this date at this time, we're sending it out. Thankfully, you guys had opened up your community center. I got some pictures last week and I'm going to get a couple pictures this week just to show kind of the people who are funding this, that the community is participating in it really well and it's going well. Any questions?
No. Fantastic. I see what it does.
Thank you.
People are taking advantage of it. A lot of hard work involved, a lot of hard work on the volunteer side.
It really has been. We added up our hours and they were putting in, I think it came to like $3,000 or $4,000 worth of volunteer time. She's not getting paid. I wish she was. I can tell you when she started, she was, you know, driving it around to people and I didn't have gas money for her. So thank you guys for opening up the community center because I know that makes it a lot easier on her. And it lets us bring in more food into the community, which makes a big difference.
And on that note.
We're checking to do that.
Yeah, let's see if we can maybe drop it here because Debbie's double handling that.
Yeah.
From the time she goes over there to here and stuff. That's cut down a lot of work. It'd be easier to take that over there than it would be to.
Yeah, and that's, we talked about that today and I kind of have a feeling that's what it would come to if we found a main location. I did want to talk to Laura about that since she's the one we started the pilot program with. I'd hate to just say, hey, we're not dropping that off anymore. So, but I am, it does make more sense if we just did everything through here.
Fantastic program though.
Well, like I said, thank you to the community because really my job on this is easy. I just get to be the connector and they're really doing the hard work. And we've had like a blast year with the USDA boxes. There's a lot of meat that comes in, but the USDA boxes have made a big difference.
I have a question.
Yes.
How long will this program run?
So it's set up in two different ways. Because you don't have an official pantry in Kingsford Heights, there's certain food you can't get. So you're basically on the Fresh Food Initiative and that is food that can go to anybody and to any community that we arrange it. At this time, there's not a set period to end it. So it could go on six months, it could go on a year, it could go on two years, it could stop tomorrow. I don't anticipate that in any way. So it's kind of open in the air right now. For the Fresh Food Initiative food, they're able to get it from different stores, locations, donors, things like that. And as long as it's part of that Fresh Food Initiative, you can have it. If it's part of the food that goes to the nonprofits that are part of the food brings, Kingsford Heights can't be included in that. But to be honest, you're getting so much food, it's not really, it doesn't impact you that you're not a part of that.
And that's why sometimes when the posts go out on the post, it's not until after like 1:30. And I tell them 3:00, 3:30, we're going to start it because I don't know how much we're getting. And I don't want to have a lot of people show up and have just a little bit.
Right.
And I don't want just a little bit to show up and have a whole bunch. So I have to wait until after I pick up the load, bring it down, sort through it and see what I have before I can put it online for people to come and get it.
I think you're getting a pretty good response from them. I've seen all the stuff that's been given out.
I know there's a couple complaints that I don't post it fast enough. Well, I post it fast as I get it. I can't move no faster than one that, you know.
This time you're going to get complaints on whether you're doing it good, whether you're doing bad, it doesn't matter.
Soon as I get it, I post it.
And to be fair, there's been times where the truck hasn't come. Like we thought we were getting a large shipment and the truck didn't. And that's just the nature of it because they're working with donors. We've had times the truck broke down. We had times where they were going to pick up the food and for whatever reason, the food wasn't there. But overall, it's been, it's been successful and I really enjoyed doing it and seeing it expand so quickly. But yeah, let me know if there's ever any issues, let me know. I know she pretty much handles everything like a boss. Honestly, I probably wouldn't even have to be included in it. She's, she's on top of it all, but it's, really appreciate you guys, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2020-12, an ordinance creating a community center maintenance fund, third reading of the motion, please.
I make a motion that we accept ordinance 2020-012 on its third.
Herbie?
Herbie.
I'll second.
It's been moved to second that we accept ordinance 2020-12, Community Center final, Community Center Maintenance Fund, final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number 2020-13, an ordinance establishing the standards for maintenance of water and sewer lines, final reading, title only. Motion to accept.
I make a motion that we accept ordinance 2020-013, an ordinance establishing the standards for maintenance of water and sewer lines on its third and final reading.
It's been moved to second that we accept ordinance number 2020-13, ordinance establishing the standards for maintenance of water and sewer lines. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Farley, come on up, please. Town council had a few people that had put in for the full-time positions on the police department. We had three that we narrowed it down to in interviews and we went as far as hiring a extensive background check. And I think the council all fully agrees, those background checks are definitely needed. One of the problems with police departments today and in the past is when somebody gets in trouble, they're asked to leave or get fired, so they leave. And that just throws that officer to the next department. And if you see somebody's got a lot of departments on their, on their resume and stuff, there's usually a reason behind that. Hiring out of the background check found things that we would have never been able to get to. I talked to Mr. Farley earlier and stuff. He commended Pat Cicero on his background check. He said it was very, very extensive. Out of the three people that we had backgrounds done on, the council felt there was only one that we were able to hire due to things that were brought up in the background. Mr. Farley, when we did our interviews before the background check, interviewed well enough that we all looked at each other and said, that's probably our next marshal. Mr. Farley was the one that passed his background check. So we need a motion to accept Mr. Farley as the marshal on the police department.
I make a motion to accept Matthew Farley for a marshal. There's some of the things that we got here too. As you said, your start date can be on October 26th. As we're going to offer you $47,000 a year. You'll have a thousand dollars for your insurance. If you want to go out and get your own insurance or take the town's or whatever. And then once you establish some residence in the town or the county of La Porte County, we'll give you a take-home vehicle. And that's what I'm making my motion on.
I see.
It's been moved to second that we hire Mr. Farley as the new town marshal. His first date of service will be the 26th of October, 2020. His salary will be established at $47,000 with a $1,000 a week insurance benefit and once, yeah, $1,000 a month.
Did I say one?
Insurance benefit and a take-home car after he resides in La Porte County. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to the town of Kingsford Heights.
Thank you, and the council.
Good to have you.
I'm good, Tom.
Yeah, go ahead. We'll give you the floor.
First off, thank you to the council for the opportunity to come to Kingsford Heights. I look forward to working with the community and the council on building relationships within the community and keeping your town and your community as safe as possible and work to learn each one of you and help you out any way on an open door policy. I want to talk with the community and build that relationship and work with you.
You have a question?
Go right ahead.
What county do you reside in now?
I'm from Huntington County, which is just southwest of Fort Wayne City.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is what we approved before, so I think we need a motion to approve the 2021 adopted budget in the amount of $768,670.
I'll make a motion. We accept the budget at $768,670.
It's been moved to second that we adopt the 2021 budget in the amount of $768,670. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's go to the community crossing grant, item seven. We talked with Paul Vincent, our engineer. We spoke with Duane. The paving grants are still open and for 2021's paving, we have about $75,000 that we can pave, use for grant match. That grant match would be for a total project of $304,965. We went through the streets in town that are the worst and it would cover these four streets. Evanston, from Knox to Roanoke. Grayton, from Meadowbrook to the Dead End. Hadley Road, from Grenway all the way through Nordway. Hamilton Road, from Grayton to Curtis, would cover that match. The total financial commitment for the town would be $76,241.25 for 2021 paving. So we need a motion to approve.
Who was the judge's match?
And that money is there? We have them.
Yes.
I'll make a motion. We move forward with the community crossing grant.
21.
2021, community crossing matching grant for paving.
I'll second it.
It's been moved to second that we accept the community crossing matching grant for in terms of $75,000 match for a total of $304,965 for paving in 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Get some real thinking. If you don't like that, she'll have a little crack script down there.
I'll be fixing that drain down the end of that road too, won't they?
Yes.
Why? That drain is down to the street.
I hope so. From the beginning.
Taking trash, picking up trash out of my yard.
I miss that.
Go to Tri Eagle Lift Station. I spoke with Steve this morning. They will take the lift station. With the agreement that the town, we sent them a letter for a bill for $3,366.73 for pumps and labor for their lack of doing things right, so to say. If we forgive that bill, they will take the lift station. And he would like, it wrote in that we would also pursue the gravity fed system again at his cost. And his cost would start at the manhole. He realizes that it may not even be able to be done because we're going to have to go through the DNR and everywhere else to do that. And I guess we should put in here when he takes it over that he takes control of the lift station, the valve vault, and the force mains to the manhole.
I'm sorry, what was it? Lift station, valve vault?
Force mains to the manhole. So lift station forces it out to that.
You should probably have something in writing.
That's why, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I told him that the attorney would draw up the contract and he would sign it at that point and stuff and then it would be his.
Do we have a $3,000 to forgive him?
And we actually have some pumps that are on the shelf right now that we could return back to the vendor and stuff and get our money back for, or sell them to him.
Is there like a personal number or anything that I can reference of where the lift station's put on?
I don't, well, I imagine that would be Tri Eagle, so I would have to, I'll get that in the morning.
That'd be great.
Everybody okay with it?
Mm-hmm.
So we need a motion to give Tri Eagle Lift Station, or Tri Eagle Chicken Plant Lift Station, it occupies their property.
I make a motion that we give Tri Eagle the lift station with our debt of $2,670.75.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we give Tri Eagle the lift station and forgive the $3,366.73 bill that was sent to them. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Under new business, Jason would like to schedule an executive session for employees or just himself to speak with the council over employee issues. So when's everybody good? Is it a look your way?
Well, I actually, I forgot my phone, so I wouldn't even be able to. I believe I'm good next week, but I can't say that 100% for sure.
Okay, give me a call and then we'll schedule around what you can do.
Just one of the new business, real quick, just for.
Yeah, I got another one too. Go ahead.
The community garden is asking if they can use the community center next week at 6:30.
For their meetings? Oh, but they've always used it, so yeah. Anytime.
Debbie, you got that? You're good?
Got it, thank you.
Trick or treat. Chief Seamless Gutters has donated the juice and chips. I picked up the hot dogs today, got the buns, so we don't have any money out of anything and stuff. Everything's been donated. Clerk Treasurer. You want me to go over it?
You can go. That's fine.
There was a bill from Hoosier Equipment in the amount of $2,585.61. That was for the big blue snow pile truck. There was, they were driving it last week and it blew the brake systems on it. And due to the amount of heavy rust on the components from the salt and everything that is spread, they ended up replacing two new brake drums, dust shields, brake chambers, all stuff that had to be done to get the truck back on the road. So I guess we need a motion to pay this bill in the amount of $2,585.61. Yes, the first one, the first one is already.
Yeah.
Put it together. That's what they.
Well, it's different.
That's what they charge us to find the problems.
Right.
They're two different problems. They had to clean all the, pull the brakes off and everything. They're two different problems on this.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, and there's another bill for $828.75 for just being able to tear it apart from all the rust. Then once they got it apart, everything was so rusty, they had to put new parts on it.
So is that the total on that or two different bills?
I had eight on, eight on, that was last price, I should have told you.
$414.36.
Sounds like it's got to be paid.
I imagine it's going to, how are we going to, we're going to go through.
Escamo, Alton.
From Alton.
Alton.
There are motions.
I made the motion, but I forgot what the total was.
I'll second it.
Did you make the motion?
I'll make a motion. Yeah, okay. Hoosier Equipment.
It's been moved to second that we pay Hoosier Equipment $3,414.36 for the repair of the upcoming snow pile truck. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Get the truck back.
Next thing on here is, I want to talk about the virus. I would like to zero out the count on the police department. Because by the end of the year, we've got, we've run out of money and I want to make sure it gets paid. So.
Oh, we should have plenty of money in general fund at the end because we haven't spent it.
Yeah, we've spent nothing.
The Amber had sent us a link on the coronavirus where the government has approved that the paying the hours, the salaries of first responders, fire departments, police departments, can, that money can be used to pay them now and stuff. So that will save arts and general fund and we'll use the COVID money to, to pay our police department now until that fund runs out.
I want to make sure we have.
And that's another $19,715 that the general fund will.
Because in December, I want to zero this account. Hope we make sure it's.
You're going to bring this account, that particular one to.
Yeah, the 20, what was it, 46 altogether?
Yeah.
And that's right there, that's, I circled this. Money we have left.
In census.
You know, I want to actually make a motion on that. But there's, there's plenty to pay, right, until the end of the year. So you're not going back retroactively and asking for reimbursement then, right?
No.
Okay.
What we'll do is just end to your, this, I mean, through, through December.
Yeah, I'd make a motion on that.
In case you need some money at that point, mind that otherwise.
I'll make a motion that we pay the first responders whatever ones we can for, through the Corona Release, Relief Fund Reimbursement Program.
I'll second it.
It's been moved to second that we use the $19,715.16 from the Corona Relief Fund to pay first responders. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If you go to Frontier on General, 32103, if you're all following me here.
Will you?
Huh?
Will you?
I called the Frontier today. The bill was three months behind. The police department's bill should average $103 a month. The electric Frontier bill, you can see, was on here for $906.52. Kind of, I, they, they kind of threw me for a loop there, so I called and asked. They stated that they hadn't had a bill paid in three months and they had received checks in the amount of $1,214.29 and that we had a positive credit of $307.77 now in the electric phone bill. My problem is, is the fact that we're being handed paperwork that says $906.52 and actually $1,214.29 has been sent to them and now we're in the credits. There's also a problem on Duane's insurance where he has paid back that $577 that was an overpayment, but he should have been on this claim docket to reimburse him for $192.60 that is not on here.
Yes, this one.
Where?
Right here.
Did you add it after I told you?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I fixed it.
Well, you didn't say anything to me. Well, yeah, because I don't have the same. You give me paperwork and then you change it in the middle of the day.
I told them everyone's faster. I told him, "Everyone's faster."
Okay, so you got your money there?
Mm-hmm.
Good. What I've also noticed is that there's a lot of bills that aren't being split between the utilities. If we have a general bill, it should be split between water, electric, and sewage. And it was the consensus that some of the utilities had more money than the others, so that's where they went. We can't do that when we're doing a bill that should be split three ways, and it has to be split three ways, or four ways, or whatever it is. Another problem is, I went through the stack of bills on the desk, and there's a stack of bills like this on the desk in there. Seventeen of those bills date from September and August. They should have been on this claim docket. There's probably another 20 bills in that pile that date from this month, and we're at the 19th of this month. When these... We're having too much of this, where it's behind or not paid ahead. When the bill comes in, it should be paid. We've given the clerk the okay to pay necessary bills. There's no reason for things to be in their arrears or have bills sitting in a pile that are dating back to August.
Well, why aren't they paid? Or they just sit on the desk for a while?
Some of those bills are... Some of those have been paid on this... On here, so...
But my thing is, if a bill come in, why can't Lori just go ahead and automatically pay it? Let her... I mean, if they're on her desk, let her go ahead and pay it.
So she has your permission when you put a bill on that desk that she can get that bill paid?
Right now.
Okay, let the record show that the clerk said that the assistant clerk could pay the bills then.
Well, I'm paying the bill.
Just so we get this under control. The total of the claims is $84,383.8. No, I'm sorry.
Has he really said?
I'm looking at my old papers. It's 84,572.98. And with the exceptions of the phone bill, we're in the positive now, so I guess we need a motion to pay those claims.
I'll make a motion. We pay claims $84,572.98.
It's been moved in second that we pay the claims for $84,572.98. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pay part of the bill. Attorneys, record.
So following your last meeting, I reached out to your financial advisors who did your water and electric studies and updated them with the status of what the boards decided. Because some of the ultimate phase in for the electric differs from what your financial advisors proposed, they're going back and they're tweaking their plan and working with me to put the ordinances together to make sure it mirrors what they have recommended as financial advisors. So the ordinances are not ready yet, but they will be here, hopefully for the next meeting. That's my goal. But so Buzz has reached out to me today, and he's... We're finishing up the electrical right now, so...
Ready?
That's it?
Public comments. Public comments. Go ahead.
Is it the financial advisors that suggested the rate increases as...
They did the rate study, yes. Buzz, Buzz Cronin Associates.
Okay, so there's no way that it can... First off, on the one paper that I got, it said between 4,000 and 5,000. We're lacking every month on electric.
You got a paper?
It was, it was on... I don't know where the hell I got it, but it was a paper that I got.
There was a report that I put out for the last meeting talking about... That was just a verbal report. There was nothing in writing towards anybody.
Yeah.
That was something that I had written down that I don't have with me right now. But the electric department was losing... Well, and this last one was lost 7,000 in the last month, and the water is losing between 4 and 6.
Now, if I recall in January, when this board took over, I think we were told that the electric company is the only part that made money.
The electric company... Realize that the electric company was destroyed financially. They took all of that money. The electric department used to have $750,000 in CDs in a healthy bank account. That's all gone.
Right.
So we went through and did a 10-year bond, 2.34%, that replaced the utility money. We got rid of the IMPA maintenance contract that was costing the town. If we just still had the maintenance contract, the electric utility would broke. So at this point, from the electric utility where it was drawn down so far and nobody's done anything with it, it's sit for years, then it's losing money at this point. So we went from the tracker factor, from a six-month tracker factor to a quarterly tracker factor because at that point, we buy power at a cheaper rate most of the time, and we can give it to the consumer at a cheaper rate. And it changes the rates every three months instead of every six months. But the electric utility needs a boost. And one of those reasons that it needs a boost is because it's a 20-plus-year rate that hasn't been changed. I mean, the water and the electric are... You're paying pre-2,000 rates. You know, it's... We're going to year 2021.
However, they did have money in there until the last board took over and everything collapsed.
The electric utility was devastated when we took over. Well, all utilities were devastated.
I'm thinking if they always had made money prior to that, they're making money again, but it's just going out because it was crumbling, right?
Well, when things crumble, you have to replace things and equipment that was here years prior that is gone, and things that were broken and never repaired. And it's...
Some of the things is...
Just what it is. It's a pain.
These businesses, these utilities have to run like businesses. And it's not that we're trying to make a whole bunch of money with this. It's we're trying to make sure that we are prepared for the 2014 tornado that came through here and cost the town $105,000. That money has to come from somewhere, and if we build those accounts up, it goes back into it. It's not... It's not like it's going out to anything specific. But right now, if we were to have another tornado come through Kingsford Heights and it cost us $105,000, we have to figure out where we're getting that money from because the electric utility doesn't simply have it.
Okay.
So all these utilities, we have to build up, put money in the reserves to put back into it. So when something breaks, we're able to use that money to fix it. We're able to do other different things with that. So that's what the goal is of running these utilities as businesses as they should be.
The electric utility's got $94,000 in it right now, but it's losing money every month. So the rate increases to stop that bleeding and stuff and move forward. It's nothing that we've taken any pleasure in.
Yeah, that's... Last month, we did...
These rate increases have been a killer, and we knew it wouldn't be a popular decision. But somebody has to make them decisions after 20 years.
Does the increase have to be as large? Because like he said, it's what if another tornado comes through? Well, the tornado didn't come through yet, so... I mean, not another one. So can you build up that rate for additional problems at a slower rate?
And that's what's happening. The electric utility was gonna go up 10% in January and then go up 2% every quarter after that until it hit the 16% or 18%, I think it was. That's a slow gradual increase and stuff. And with the tracker factor, you probably won't feel too much of that. You know, I would doubt on the tracker, with the tracker factor, that your electric's gonna see a big variation.
So how much do you think that's gonna be? 20, 30, 40 dollars more added to your bill a month?
For the electric?
For the whole water and all, isn't it?
Well, it all depends on what you use. And let me say this with the what you use and stuff, just from Facebook posts and stuff that have been out there and stuff. I'm on a... I like Facebook for reasons of telling the truth. I don't like Facebook for the people to get on there and stuff, and there's always the same few that want to cause problems by not saying the truth. I have no problem with the truth. We've had several things on there about how residents have to sell their kids' stuff to be able to pay their bills and everything else, and posting $400 and $500 bills. I went in there and with Laura, and I checked these people's bills out, and those bills were not $400 and $500. They paid their bills, but late, and they had the arrears added on to it. So then they put the whole amount down there and didn't subtract the arrears that they had already paid. So their actual bill is like $235. Well, sorry, I paid 300, you know?
Well, I know there's some overly dramatic people in this town.
Yes.
But I do have a question that probably, it's just because I don't understand, to do the extra roadwork of the streets that you name, the town had to cough up $75,000. Where'd that come from?
We get money in through the state for paving every year through motor vehicle highway funds, through gas tax, through a bunch of stuff that comes in.
So it's not once a year we get the money? Because earlier this year, they paved other roads, and we didn't have additional funds to...
And keep in mind, that was for 2020. We just approved 2021, so this is the next year's paving. It does nothing to do with this budget this year.
Okay.
It's 2021 budget. Yes, ma'am?
My question is, I just want to get an understanding of why the sewage is three times the amount the water amount.
The sewage plant, when we took over, was destroyed. The town had been paying thousands of dollars to the Indiana Department of Environmental Management for fines that were caused by dumping turds out the back of the plant. The sewer plant had fell apart, was not fixed, and there was a time in February, I believe it was, that the actual sewage plant was running off of a three-inch trash pump. That's just they pumping. We were pumping poop from one tank to another to keep the sewage plant running. Otherwise, it would have been gone. And they come up with ways to fix it. We ended up finding some funding and stuff and getting things fixed. We replaced all of the pumps down there. When we looked at the grant that we had coming in, the grants for $800,000, it was still gonna take another $600,000 on top of that to fix that plant, to bring that plant back to where it should be, a state-of-the-art. We have plans right now to counsel with that over the next three years. That sewage plant should be a shiny penny and not need anything if the money is spent correctly. With that 108% increase, we could take that sewage plant went to a quarter-million-dollar budget. We have $50,000 a year that we have to pay bond on the 10-year money that we put back into the utilities that was missing. And then you got the $200,000 there, you fix the repairs, and then you have your personnel and then move forward with that. We'll be able to fix a whole lot of stuff down there in the next three years. The sewage plant construction, the grant started today. It's just gonna take a lot to bring it back. It was destroyed, and the only way, the only way we could bring that plant back was to put that 108% increase in. And it put everything on the shoulders of the people that are here. And we didn't want to do that. We didn't have a choice. If the sewage plant would have went down, the state would have come in and put a $10 million plant in there, and you'd have had a 400% increase, and it would be a ghost town. You know, you'd have had the same problems that Westville had when their plant went down. They went in there and had to buy that whole brand-new big plant and stuff, and you know, they're paying huge rates. It's just something that had to be done. And then the, you know, you got water and electric, and the electric was... Everything was outsourced. They were, you know, you were paying by the time you paid all of the maintenance agreement on IMPA, ended up $148,000 a year. That was just foolish money on our part and stuff because we could hire a lineman and do our own stuff here for half of that, which we're doing right now. But this first year is the most painful we'll have. We should be able to jump forward. The problem we had with the old clerk was she quit keeping records in February of last year. She left in November. There wasn't a computer entry. There wasn't a pen entry or anything else for all those months. We'd been paying bills from August of last year out of this year's budget, which destroyed this budget, this year's budget, because we're paying last year's bills that weren't paid, you know? So there's... Go ahead.
I'm sorry. So the sewage cost being three times the water isn't based on how much water we use. It's based on what it takes to run the sewage plant, right? Is that my understanding?
No, you... Your base sewer is... What's the... How's that work?
For every 1,000 gallons, the price goes up. So yeah, it is based on the water usage of our drainage.
And I understand how some families, when you start doing, especially when you lose the summer sewage rates and stuff, it can hurt, and you have to wash that water spigot and everything. And it's at the 2,000, 3,000 gallon range and stuff, you know? I mean, I use a lot of electric at my house and stuff, but you know, I pay $300, sometimes $400 bills. You know, it hurts though. You use a little bit of water and stuff, and you couldn't catch me watering a blade of grass now. No way.
Oh, my husband.
Go ahead.
I just have two questions. Has anybody on the board checked and seen how many families moved out because the increase in sewage?
I haven't personally, but I'll give you my thought on that. How can it matter? It's sad that it happens and stuff, but the increases have to take place.
Oh, no. I was just wondering because people were writing, "We're moving out. We're moving out."
You know, and every time, every time the council does something or anything else or something that somebody don't like, that's what you hear on there and stuff. And, you know, if you move out today, somebody else will be inside your house tomorrow. There's no place to rent in town. Everything's full. And if you want to go around and look at how much it costs to rent around places, you know, it's...
So when these people move out, if they do move out, the cost, the loss that'll come from them moving out, it won't come back to us, will it?
No.
You get... Because your rates won't change because someone else is moving out. It's just we... And that's where it would hurt us if a lot of people move out. But this community, if you look at it, is a lot of rental properties that come in, and there's a lot of turnover regardless of whether or not they stay or go. But as you said, this town is, people are still looking for rental properties and their rentals here in town. So no, I mean, we'd never be able to keep track of how many people leave and how many people go a month. It's just that your rates are based off of yours. And that's the other thing, too, just to kind of have. You might... My normal use is about 3,000 gallons. However, you get, if you use 3,200, 3,400, or 3,400 gallons in a month, that's gonna click over to the next month or whatever. You're gonna go again into 3,400, another 3,400. Your next month, that's gonna click over to an actual 4,000 gallons used in a month. So you're gonna... Your bill's gonna fluctuate that way as well. And, you know, they use it by 1,000 gallons, but if you use 1,200 gallons a month, it's gonna take an extra five months for that extra 1,000 to kick over to where it actually comes into your bill.
And my last question, bird ringo. I heard the board wasn't going to go after legal recourse of the last board and the money that...
You know, I hear so much...
This is what I heard.
I hear so much, and I'm gonna tell you what. There are people right here in this room. There's people out there and stuff that have put out so much false crap, that's blatant lies just to cause problems.
That's why I'm asking.
And, no.
No matter what, we're not able to talk about it.
No matter what, we're not able to talk about it. We, it, that's up to our attorney to deal with and we can't talk about.
I didn't want you to talk about it just if you were proceeding.
This is what's gonna happen on the recourse and I will talk about it just a little bit, not going in depth. But we as a council have decided that there, when we went through the insurance company and looked at their, uh, what the town's insurance was, there was an insurance policy that Debbie Blake didn't know we had and we didn't know we had, that covers the mistakes of elected officials and employees in the amount of a two-hundred million, or two hun, two-million-dollar policy. I spoke with Debbie Blake about that, started in December. I'll start putting together the ever-long saga, uh, fairy tale of the entire thing for the last eight years back and turn it over to the, and it will take a few months to do. And it will be turned over to that town's insurance company. And if the town insurance company feels that we have money coming back to us, Debbie Blake seems to think that we'll get part of it back, but not all of it, then it will be up to the insurance company at that point to hire the attorneys to go after those responsible. We as a town go, are going at it that way because we can't afford the legal costs to go after people like that. So let the insurance company go after them. We've got an insurance policy we're paying for. If it happens, it happens. If it doesn't, it won't be because we didn't put it in their hands.
Okay, but the clerk who stopped doing her job in February was not part of the town board. You going after her and her, um, boyfriend?
Husband?
Oh, I didn't know.
Everything that happened in this town in the last eight years back is gonna go before the, uh, insurance company. And what they do with it will be their decision, not ours. But I'll, everything that, uh, we do will sit down collectively as a council and stuff and we'll go over the paperwork and, and everything that's been found and that will be up to them. And after that, there won't be any discussion whatsoever because we just can't do that, you know? So.
Okay, my understanding is you don't have to tell us anything. But why is it when we get good police people out here, boom, they're fired?
Uh, I will speak, I will speak under the fact of.
Are you a policeman?
Good.
Are you the one here?
Yeah, he just, he just hired on us and he's the new marshal. Okay. We had three people.
Well, I'm only asking because there's so many rumors going around.
No, you're asking because you put out a post about.
I did and I said you guys are absolutely out of your minds.
Yep, and, and I can only say this, Debbie, that she was looked at as a person that would have been hired and we planned on hiring and we had a background checks done on the three candidates. And after we got the background checks done, it was our opinion in the end, from what was pulled up from the background checks, that those other two people were not hirable. That's what happened. We were put in a position to do what we had to do to protect the town. And that's what we did. I liked her. I think she did a fantastic job.
I did too.
But there was, but there was, there was things found in, in these background checks that we as a council could not go forward with. And that's what we're put here for. And we can't go through and just give you every little nook and cranny and stuff and tell you about everything. But that's what happened.
I heard about.
We were not, we were not happy. We were not happy that night. We went home with our heads down, so.
So she's not gonna try to sue the town?
She had no recourse, she was part-time.
Oh, good.
But wouldn't you have known that when you brought her on here?
No, because she was part-time and she was hired by the other officers, not us. The, uh.
They don't do back check, background checks when they bring them in?
No, not on the part-timers and stuff. And it's, uh, and it's, you're right, and it's something that we need to look at in the future. We learned a whole lot over these backgrounds. This is the first time this town's did background checks and I'm gonna tell you what, they bought, he, he, it took six weeks to do those background checks and stuff and he bought up stuff that we didn't ever, ever, ever saw. And I'm glad that we went that way. And those background checks are done because they saved you millions of dollars in the end.
And answering your question about the marshal that left, he went for a better paid job. He wasn't fired either.
No, I never said he was fired. I know he left.
I thought you said that we got rid of him.
Yeah, it seemed on the post and stuff that you thought we got rid of him. Dave Combs left the Kingsford Heights Police Department. Because he got a huge pay raise and good insurance and a good position, so.
I'm asking about Ashley.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's all I can say. Go ahead.
Because they were both good officers, is what I'm saying.
We can't hire people because we like them or we're friends. We're doing what's best for the town. I liked her, but likes don't get it. When, when we pay somebody X number of dollars to do a background check and it come back negative, we have to do gel dillages with it.
Well, it should be done before they're hired on, before they're actually working here.
And that's what, that's.
That's why I'm asking.
But that's some of the stuff that we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna need to talk about when it comes time to, to reevaluate how, what our hiring process actually is. And, and that's just, that's something that he's already said. We're, we're gonna look into all of this stuff so that we do protect ourselves from stuff like this.
Well, I know in the past they don't check, that's what I'm saying. You could be hiring a child luster and not even knowing it.
There's very little that you'll get from regular state, uh, investigations and going through the backgrounds and everything. You know, you'll come up with stuff that's sort of been arrested or anything else, but these backgrounds go into everything.
How much does that cost to do a background check?
It was twenty-four hundred dollars to do three background checks.
That's why.
It's expensive, but it's, it's much needed.
Somebody on here that's gonna.
This is, this is the first time it's ever been done.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm saying. It should have been done all along, 'cause you don't know who you're pulling into.
Yeah. You know, what, and I agree with you. I agree. And, and I think the board collectively agrees too. When, when we sat down that night, we were all very relieved that the background check was done. You know, and it was, it was worth every penny that, uh, we spent on it. That's what you have to do to protect your town. Any other questions? Yes?
This is very minor compared to everything else. He comes home, I think he works nights, puts the dog outside and it barks all day long. People on the other side of me, they put their dogs out. Every time I go out my door, they're barking. Is there a no, um, noise ordinance to cover this?
There, there is a noise ordinance and I would suggest that, uh, after the twenty-sixth of October, when the new marshal takes place and those dogs are still yapping away, that you give him a call and let him take care of it.
Thank you. I mean, it's minor compared to everything else, but it's really irritating.
Yeah, well, I, I, I find that quite irritating.
Five o'clock in the morning until five o'clock at night and sometimes later. It's not minor if it affects your peace.
How many officers do we have at this minute?
Two. Part-time.
Part-time.
Two part-time. The, uh, actually, and one full-time after the twenty-sixth. We hired one.
No bad time, buddy.
But, uh, we're, we're putting up notices for more part-time officers and, and Marshall Farthing there will, uh, look for another, uh, full-time officer and come to us with that and we'll get a background check going after he's gone and see where we go from there. But it's actively moving forward. Any other questions? Any other questions? Motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna make the motion that we adjourn.
Motion to secondly adjourn.